All right, let's call this meeting back to order. If everybody could please take their seats.
Thank you very much. Please take your seat. We've got all the council members back. I'd like to thank the council for allowing us to move this presentation now to this moment. So Justice Newby has come. Justice Newby is on the North Carolina Supreme Court and he's come out here to help administer an oath tonight and I very much appreciate that. So that oath is for me. I've been asked to serve on a board for the state Code Officials Qualification Board. So with that, I'll come up and take my oath.
I want to say thank you. I was speaking to a Cub Scout pack and one of the council members asked me who was better behaved, the council or the Cub Scout pack? I took the Fifth Amendment on that. You know, I'm delighted to be with y'all and I'm sorry to interrupt your meeting, but when your mayor asked me if I would administer this oath, I'm part of the Chief Justice Tafford from the Civic House, Ed Pann, and I hope that we're all saying, wow, why do we do that? Isn't it just a formality that we all go through? Seventeen seventy-seven, it's in our statute books, General Statute eleven dash one and the following, talks about how hard it is for humans to set aside our own personal interests and do what is right and just and fair for the community. You know, we're just kind of wired to look after ourselves and this is a moment that hopefully all elected officials look back to when they took that oath before the people and as the statute says, before all my gods, to do always what is in the best interest of the whole world. You know, I'm, as all of us are, saddened by some of the sharp language that's used in the political arena. And I think my experience is, I've been on court twelve plus years, my experience is, we back up a little bit, we'll find that our commonality far surpasses our differences, that we love our country, our state, our city. Now, we can disagree on policies, but at the end of the day, you know, these are preferences. They're not principles. And I'm so grateful that we recognize and honor the principles and that's what we're doing now with this oath. Sorry, I'll stop and give out the business of the folks, of the people. So, that being said, if you'll place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, do you state your name?
I Lance Solomon.
Do you solemnly swear that you'll support the Constitution of the United States? And do you solemnly swear that you'll be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof? And that you'll endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States? And do you solemnly swear that you'll well and truly execute the duties of your office as a member of the North Carolina Code Officials Qualification Board, according to the best of your skill and ability, according to law, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm a judge. You gotta do the paperwork. I have to say, I have sworn in likewise, folks. This is my very first official of the Code Officials Qualification Board.
Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Yeah, my pleasure. Thank you, Justice Newby.
Thank y'all for letting me interrupt. And for those of you who, like myself, didn't know that much about what a Code Officials Qualification Board was until I was asked, it is a board of folks around the state that help to certify inspectors for municipalities and counties that do inspections of buildings and things like that, so, and plans. So that's, I'll be a representative for the people to help make sure we certify folks correctly. Again, thanks to the council for helping to get that matter taken care of while Justice Newby was here. With that, we'll now move on to new business. We have new business item number one. This is the possible motion to approve, or possible motion to approve a paid parental leave policy for town employees. The Human Resources Director Eleanor Green will be presenting this item this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and members of the council. We're here to talk about a paid parental leave policy that, as you heard from some of the speakers earlier, has already been passed by Wake County, Cary, Durham, Greensboro. Wake Forest is considering it and a number of private employers also already have this policy. Councilmember Dozier brought this request to the Personnel Committee back in, I think it was November, and asked us to look at a policy. So we have put together a policy that would provide for six weeks of paid leave for our employees in the case of a birth or adoption of a child. The policy also provides that in the case of a cesarean section or other medical complications, there'd be a possible eight weeks of paid leave. This paid leave would not be charged as sick or vacation leave. It would be a separate type of leave. It would run concurrently with FMLA. So right now, people are allowed to get up to twelve weeks of leave off of work for this reason, but it's, a lot of times that's unpaid leave. This six weeks would be part of the twelve weeks of FMLA, but it would be paid. So, we're asking you to support that policy tonight.
All right, thank you. So as this is a new business item, I'll turn to the council to see if anyone has any thoughts or questions for Dr. Green.
Do, how many employees does Apex employ?
We have four hundred and fifteen full-time employees that would be eligible for the paid parental leave.
That are eligible? And what eligibility?
Well, I'll go back up. There are four hundred and fifteen employees that are benefit eligible. So, to be eligible for this parental leave, you would have to have been employed for one year. So clearly, not all of those four hundred and fifteen have been here a year, but they would ultimately be eligible.
Of those four hundred and fifteen, they obviously probably are all not in childbearing years.
Right. We have, I do have that. We have fifty-four percent of our employees are currently in the childbearing years. I will also tell you that last year, we had fourteen FMLA requests that I'm aware of for childbirth. The employees are not required to request FMLA if it's a absence less than two weeks. So I know there were some births in the departments where some of our male employees, you know, took a few days, not two weeks. So I can't say that absolutely was the number of, that we had affected last year, but we did have fourteen. Over the past three years, that number's thirty employees. Over the past three years have taken FMLA for childbirth, that I know of.
Dr. Green, are you aware of any employees who came back earlier than they wanted to because of financial reasons or something related to that?
I do know we've had employees, female employees, not take their full twelve weeks. So I, I can only assume that some of that might be financial, but I don't know for sure.
Thank you.
I've heard a number of people say that there's no cost associated with that. Can you explain that? Because if somebody's not there, presumably somebody has to do their job and there's a cost associated with that.
That's correct. There is really indirect cost more than a direct cost. So, we budget for all the positions every year, you know, the salary dollars and so we don't expect there'd be a lot of new money that would be required in the budget to pay for this benefit. The only departments that I know of that have to pull in personnel when somebody's out would be our EMS and our fire department. Up until now, have been shorter staffed. That might be getting a little better, but they've been the ones who've had to call in folks. Otherwise, people have just worked short. They have worked short-staffed. And so, yes, potentially that has caused some burdens on other employees to have to pick up their slack. But in terms of real dollars and cents, in a budget standpoint, I don't think there'd be much of an impact.
But there would be an impact. I'm trying to figure out what the true cost of this is, roughly speaking. So, meaning if we have to hire our EMS and the fire department, police department folks, we'll go over time.
Well, we did, so I did look at this, if, for our average employee of childbearing years, just kind of taking their average salary, if they took six weeks off, it would cost about five thousand and eight hundred and thirty-five dollars in annual salary. That's not the benefit cost associated with that, just the base salary.
Five thousand eight hundred, is it?
Five thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars, yes, that we'd be paying them while they're out on leave.
Per person for six weeks?
Per person for six weeks.
Not counting the eight weeks if it was a C-section.
That's correct. But again, that money is made, is contained in the budget because we budget a full salary every year for every employee.
But essentially, we're giving them six or eight extra weeks of vacation for that year, right?
We'd be giving them six weeks of paid time off. It would be parental leave specifically for the purpose of-
So they still have their vacation and sick time that's accruing, so I think that's maybe-
One of the, one of the struggles I know parents have is that if they use all their sick and vacation leave for the childbirth period, then when the children are sick or, you know, they need to be home, then oftentimes it's a, it's a, kind of a domino effect. They exhaust their leave during the childbirth and then struggle to keep leave, to be out of work when the child's sick or take them to the doctor.
And I'd say connected to that, the reverse is true. I mean, if you've already suffered an illness and then you have a baby, then you have no leave. Then you, what do you do when a doctor says you can't go back to work within six weeks? Then you go back because you have no leave. So, you could be sick already and not be on vacation, but be sick, exhaust all your leave and you have a baby. Then what do you do? How do you bond with your baby?
Going along with that, I have a question. So the town offers accrued sick leave.
That's correct.
And how, how much accrued sick leave can you-
You accrue, we accrue it bi-weekly, but it's the equivalent of one day a month. So it's twelve, twelve days a year.
Okay, and it, that does not go away at the end of the year?
That's correct. It, it, people can keep sick leave forever and ever and as you may know, there's a benefit associated with retirement and sick leave, the unused sick leave counts towards retirement. That's correct.
What about vacation leave? Can, is there a limit on that?
Vacation leave, vacation leave, people can accrue up to two hundred and forty hours or carry forward up to two hundred and forty hours every year. Any excess vacation leave can roll to sick leave at the beginning of a calendar year.
So do the math for me, two hundred hour, two hundred and forty hours a year?
Thirty days.
Okay. And that can roll into-
It can roll into sick, any excess of two hundred and forty can roll into sick leave.
Okay.
Ms. Green, would you, I'm looking at, okay, so we have Cary, Greensboro, Wake County, Durham County, and Wake Forest is currently in the same stage of the process.
And the city of Durham.
And Durham.
Also, just recently, I think it was last week, Duke Energy, which I bring them up only because we're an electric city and so they now are kind of a competitor of ours for electric linemen. And they just recently passed a six-week paid parental leave policy.
So from a competitive advantage, I'm looking at it from a business perspective, right? From a competitive advantage and potentially losing or lost employees through exit interviews, through what have, what is, have we lost people because we don't offer this benefit?
We have, we, I can speak to one employee who recently left us, a paramedic, who left us to go to Wake County and part of his reason for going was that Wake County had the family med, this paid parental leave benefit. I do think that it's gonna become a very, a recruitment and a retention tool if other people around us have this benefit and we don't. When, when new police officers, for instance, are looking at what agency to go to, there are little tiny things in our benefits package that make somebody's decision. I can tell you, at one point, it was take, in the police department, it was take-home cars. We were losing people because we didn't have the take-home car program. Now we do. If we know Wake County Sheriff's Department and the Cary Police Department, you know, have this benefit and we don't, I think it is gonna be an issue and if they're looking at their options, and that's something we don't have and they do.
Do we have short-term disability as a part of our benefits package?
We do not, we offer short-term disability, but it's a voluntary program. So people have to pay the premiums themselves. It's not something the town pays for the employee.
What is our, hmm, I'm trying to look at ways to maybe mitigate the expense to taxpayers on some of this through mitigation of an insurance company buying short-term disability, because that can cover, I think that's about two-thirds of your salary because it's an after-tax benefit.
Right, right. Well, we could certainly, you know, cost out, see what it, see what that would be to offer a short-term disability policy for our employees that would be paid for by the town. But that is gonna bring true dollar cost into our budget because we'd have to pay for that benefit.
What, what is Duke's plan? What did they recently-
I believe it's six weeks of paid leave, male and female employees.
And I would say if it's short-term disability, which, you said, that's cost, it's paying insurance versus giving someone their income, then that would not go for a male, I would imagine.
That is, that actually, that's a very good point. The short-term disability is only for the actual medical disability and that's true. Our, our female employees are allowed to use short-term disability when they're out, just, and it's only six weeks, just a period of disability for a female. And the males, no, they're not allowed that. That's a good, that's a good point. Yes, thank you.
Um, this, did this ever come up in a employee's survey at all? I don't believe it has. Like what's, I think the only reason this came up is because then Councilwoman Dozier brought it up, but is, have employees asked for this other than the one employee?
Well, ever since it's been on the radar with Wake County doing it and Cary doing it, absolutely, I've heard a lot of feedback from employees that they'd like to have it. It's not a benefit that quite honestly was on anyone's radar screen when we did our employee survey. But it is very, right now, they know, they, staff knows it's being considered and I can tell you, we're getting a lot of positive, I'm getting a lot of positive comments about the idea.
There seems to be a six weeks for an adoption or for foster parents also.
That's correct.
I guess that's where I don't understand because a live birth or a birth from, and the, the woman giving birth has gone through a traumatic physical experience and is typically exhausted and needs the six weeks. I don't understand why an adoption or a foster parent situation is the same.
It, it's a bonding. This is really about bonding time with your child. So obviously, for the woman who's just given childbirth, yes, there's the physical disability, but a lot of these parental leave policies are in place to help provide bonding time. I can also tell you, we've had a couple employees go through the adoption process and just doing that, sometimes they've actually had to be out of state in a hotel room for a couple, three weeks while they're going through that whole process of whether or not they're able to get the child. So, it takes a lot of time in an adoption, so those are the reasons.
And same with foster parents?
And foster parents, again, I think it's an adjustment period and a bonding period. Taking a foster child into your home, I think, would be a tremendous adjustment, maybe more so than a newborn.
And also fostering a child also is a tremendous benefit in, in general, not just the child, but to the system who is actually placing it in a home, not into a home with a bunch of children. I think J.C. could probably attest to that, so.
You know, I'm gonna have to say something, you know, I, obviously I've dealt with this. I've been a teacher for years. My, I was teaching when my children were born, so I understand government and the government policy and Wake County's policy, State North Carolina's policy with maternity leave. And I had to, to, like Ms. Sherman talked about, I had to do some rearranging and figuring out things and all that too. I, I think, the way I feel about this right now, I think there's, we have a lot of questions. I think is this a good policy in the long run to have for, to help people? I think there's a lot of questions and I, my understanding was that it was a split vote in the committee. That, that's correct.
That's correct.
So, and it came out of committee to come to counsel. We, we, this was on our agenda last Thursday and I, and, you know, so I'm gonna ask that we could send it back to committee so that we could go to committee and ask questions in a more informal setting and just try to work things out, try to come up with a consensus and a compromise so that we can all agree with this. Is that, is that okay with you? I know you're-
I appreciate you asking. I guess the question for me is, you know, we've had this, it's been on the agenda for the committee since November and we all are prized of the information, you know, from our clerk about what's coming up and so I try to keep up with you all's committees too and, and it's a challenge because I am quite busy, but I try. So, you know, I was waiting to hear, I was trying to hold back from my questions or my points and, you know, like over the past couple of hours, I've heard some last-minute, you know, questions that I hadn't heard before. So I thought this was a great time to have Eleanor and we had two people who said they were, they would stay the night. And so I don't hear, what are, you know, I don't hear any more questions, so I guess I'm wondering, do we have more, do we really have more questions?
I, I do, I do have more questions.
You just don't want to ask them tonight?
Well, I don't mind, I just don't want to keep people here forever and I feel like that we kind of need to talk more informally about this and maybe it has been on, Mr. Shaw, has it been on the agenda, on yours planning, on Personnel since November?
No, it was not on the agenda actually until we got the Personnel Committee convened. Ms. Dozier asked for it to be had, so I, as chairman, I obliged her and then so it was discussed and at the time, I opposed it for a number of reasons, but she was for it. So, I, I don't want to keep anything from the council, so, you know, we agreed to have it go for, for the council, have it on or drop the bill.
I do feel like you can revise the agenda, okay.
So.
Mm-hmm.
So, can, what would be a negative of sending it back to committee to let us come to committee meeting, ask questions and kind of discuss it and find out for more information from Dr. Green about how this is gonna impact and what all this is? I mean, we have the retreat coming up as well. Like I said, I'm a person that has benefited from maternity leave, but I still had to, you know, take my sick days and whatever. I would just like to hear more about how exactly this is gonna play out, how it's gonna affect all the employees and what, how it's going to impact our tax dollars as well, good or bad. And I think it's, I don't see a negative in going back to the committee unless y'all do. Do you, do you see a negative?
You can go first, Jean.
No, no, I have no problem going back to committee. I do have some questions. Number one, I want to see how this compares to other municipalities as far as-
Very similarly, I will say. Basically, Cary, Cary drafted theirs off of what Wake County had done and I pretty much did the same thing and Greensboro too.
Because one of the concerns, if I recall correctly, if somebody comes back to work and they don't work six months, we recover only a quarter of it or half of it?
So the, so the recommendation is if they come back, they, they need to come back a year in order not to have to reimburse anything.
Right.
If they come back and only work six months, then they pay back a half of it. If they, if they work, if they work less than a year, I believe it's a quarter of it.
Yeah, prorated.
Prorated. And that was Councilman Dozier's suggestion of how we handle that.
So the other question at hand then is if they say they don't come back, if they come back for six months, so they owe us one half of it.
Right.
It's said in here to be deducted from the last paycheck. Presumably, they get paid more than six months in the last paycheck, you know what I mean? So, for, the last paycheck wouldn't cover it, right? So there's the town in a position to have to sue to get their money back.
It depends, well, it does depend totally on that person's salary of what they, yeah, I mean, there's paid-out vacation that somebody may have to their vacation payouts, up to two hundred and forty hours. So depending on somebody's leave balance there, they're ma, they may have enough to take it out. It's possible though, there could be a case where somebody does not have that amount. That's correct. And we'd have to go to another means to get it.
And in, in general, I'll say this, I mean, I think we have the best employees around, bar none, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart. I talked to a lot of people in town of Apex. Seems like every interaction we, they have with town employees, it's always exemplary. And so, you know, I think very highly of town employees. My concern is, even though the cost is kind of, what I would say, negligible, it's still a cost. And every year, we go into the budget season and we have so many, so many needs, from Pleasant Park to Senior Center to this and that. Everything, every, every little bit makes a difference. And so what I'm seeing here is, maybe it's, the tide's turning, people are demanding this, but up until now, I have not seen a, people calling out for this benefit. I think we do pay our employees well. I think we have a good benefits package. I talked to employees at other municipalities who would kill an employee of the town of Apex. So, to me, it's solving a problem we don't have right now. And knowing that we need the money for our extreme needs or for, you know, as far as budget items go, I wouldn't be in favor of this, so that's where I stand.
I'll go last. If anyone else wants to say anything.
Well, I'll, if, do you want to say something else?
Oh, not right now, it's empty.
Okay. You're gonna go last?
I'm gonna go last.
I'm going last.
No, I, I would, I've, I've got a lot of information that I haven't been able to read completely. I think I would like to read that, at least, uh, some of it. But I guess one of the things that I'm concerned about really is males and females getting the same amount of time off. And I just look at the female in a birth situation as needing more time off than a male. And I, I think that's one of the things that this thing should be massaged yet. If we're given six weeks to, to both of them, why, why not look at giving eight weeks to a female and four weeks to a male? Because I just think that the female bonding situation and with the baby and with the breastfeeding situation, I just think it's more important that they get more time than the male. That, that, and, um, I'd like to get satisfied with the foster parent and the adoption part because I still look at it as a physical requirement for a woman to go through. The fact that she went through a physical stressful period of her life to have the time to recuperate and I think that's more important than, than when there isn't the physical thing. And I understand what, what, um, Ms. Green is saying about the, the time to go make the adoption and that sort of stuff. But I, I think this needs to be looked at a little bit closer from my standpoint. All right. Who wants to go last first?
I'll, I'll go. I'll let you have the last one. Um, so I, I would echo a lot of what's been said, you know, I, we got our agendas when we did and trying to sort through all the data on this and information. You know, I don't think we're at a competitive disadvantage as far as our employees go in Apex. I think we have some of the best staff around to echo Councilman Shaw's point. I don't know if getting this rich of a benefit right away is the correct step. Again, we're not at a huge competitive disadvantage with other municipalities. Maybe we kind of take baby steps to get this thing in place.
Okay. So I have a couple of things. So first, I want to thank Dr. Green and Mr. Havens for all your work on that and whoever assisted you. I want to thank Ms. Sherman for bringing it to me and for all you stick, you know, sticking around with us and coming. I appreciate that very much. The next thing I would say is, um, um, there was a mention earlier about, you know, related to the, how, the residential, um, um, proposal about benefits and staff and, and staff recommendation. Well, you have a staff recommendation here is what I'd say about that. And it's clear this is a benefit. What I'd say next is, uh, you know, you know, I, I do, I believe that the staff here, I think that some folks are certainly, with certain responsibilities, probably put their family last at times, particularly those who have to be here because of natural disasters and, you know, things like that. So, I think it's important to try to, you know, make efforts to do things for folks who, because they work for, on behalf of people who have to put their families last. That's what I was trying to do. And, um, the other thing I would say is that, um, if we're doing baby steps, then, you know, we've had a couple meetings, Personnel, I've attended some other meetings that I'm not part of, so if people have questions, then, um, the, the only way I'm probably willing to send this to committee is that people actually say they have questions, come to the meeting and have their questions and then so that can be answered. Otherwise, if it's just Jean and I, I think it just makes no sense. And the last thing I'll say is either, you know, we're for kids or we're just kidding. And for me, I'm for kids and families. I had two. And since people get into their personal stuff, where I work, I had six weeks of maternity leave. Then I had, I exhausted all of my leave, which is nine weeks of leave. And so I stayed out for four months and then six months with my kids. And I worked three and four days for nine years because my job felt it was important to support my family and I, to work on behalf of families in North Carolina. So this is what I'm trying to do, is to try to use my advocacy and what I have. I don't think that people should, could compare, I think I, people should get more than what I have, not less. And so that's what I was trying to do. And I'm sorry that it didn't pass this evening. I will send this back to committee.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, well, it sounds like-
Please let us know when it is gonna be, when the committee meeting is and when it will be on the agenda so that we can be there.
It's scheduled ASAP.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, so, hang on one second. So it sounds like, um, that both committee members are, are okay to, to have that scheduled?
Yeah, I'll make a motion unless she wants to, to send this back.
I'll make the motion to send it back to the Personnel Committee for all members of this council to be present. Thank you.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion in a second to send this back to committee, um, to have further questions asked. Uh, any, any-
Maybe, if I could recommend, if anybody's got questions, maybe they could submit them ahead of time to, uh, Drew and then get it through.
Yes, I'm just in front of the attorney about, she, she's, she's opining that we need to have this as a work session for the council and not committee meeting.
Rather than committee meeting.
Um, it sounds like that may be the, if, if the intent is for all council members to be there for that discussion, then-
That's the intent.
And participate and deliberate together.
Then, then you're right, that's, that needs to be a work session, we, we can certainly do that, um.
Should it be something that we do at the retreat since that's coming up?
Well, let me, so, no, it needs to be its own separate thing.
No, it shouldn't.
Okay, okay.
Let, let me, so since this is not going to be a committee, let me charge this to the town manager to, um, get a workshop set up for us for discussion of this topic, does that sound good?
We'll do it.
All right, um, we do have the motion on the table, just for the formality, I think, let's go ahead and vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, we will now send this to the workshop and, um, the town manager will get that scheduled. And, uh, if we have questions that we'd like to be discussed during that, we can submit them in advance. Um, let me just ask while we've got everybody, is there a particular location or email address? Or do you want to have IT set one up, you know, for us, for council, to, to direct any specific questions? Or do you want us to just send you one email?
You, you need to send it to me, not to all council.
Yeah.
Because you can't deliberate via email.
Correct.
So if you, if you want to have the questions then collated and sent to the council as part of your agenda, we can do that.
All right.
But you can't deliberate via email.
So let's, let's do this, in order to not, uh, inundate the town manager, collect your questions in a single location and then when you feel like you've got a hundred percent of your questions, uh, enumerated, then put them in one email to the town manager so he'll receive not more than five or six, as the case might be.
And according to record, it's a public meeting, so everybody can attend, right?
Right, the workshop will be a public meeting.
But there's no dialogue?
Um, that's right, it's a, it's a workshop, so the council deliberates and, um, asks questions of staff and then, um-
Just want to make sure these folks know they're taking attendance, they wish.
Yep, yep, yeah, it'll be public, it'll be a publicly noticed meeting.
In more, more informal settings so that we can ask our questions and get our questions together and all.
Right. All right, thank you very much, um.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mhm.
Thank you.
And thank you, Dr. Green.
Is she always my doctor? Is she always my doctor or is this something new?
I think she's always been, or at least for the last few years.
Okay.
I didn't know until I found out indirectly.
Yeah.
All right, well now move on to new business number two, uh, this is an item, um, requested by council member Bill Jensen. I'll let you go ahead and go straight into it.
Okay, I'll try to make this shorter.
Dan.
Uh, you, I, I, I assume you've read that, what the, uh, what I'm requesting. And I just want to say the, uh, the cost of solar photovoltaics has come down to the point where now, um, without any subsidies, uh, for, um, for, uh, to supplement the, the cost, that they actually have a, um, rate of return out of it that is positive. Uh, at least that's what my indications were. And, and all I'm asking here is that, um, we'd be able to go out for bids for the firehouse and for the public works. They both have similar roofs, they have similar situations. Would do the firehouse separate, the public work separate, and the two of them together in the hopes of getting, um, a lower price. And after that, we can look at it and see if, uh, if it all gels together and, uh, go ahead and, uh, and, um, purchase it if we so wish. The, the rough numbers probably would be for both of them is probably two hundred and ten thousand dollars if we decided to purchase it.
All right, let me ask a clarification question here, so for the town manager. Um, so if we, if we tonight wanted to say, hey, we've got a building, we've got a rooftop, if we put out a request for a bid, or whether you call it an RFP or an RFQ or some version of that, um, does that in any way obligate us to accept one or more, or can we accept zero if we choose?
We would write the RFP to say the council reserves the right to reject all.
Okay, and I'm not asking that question because I'm trying to set us up to reject everything, but I really, I want to make sure that the council understands that this isn't-
It would not be obligating the council.
Right, this, this isn't an obligation, it's just an opportunity to say, hey, staff, why don't we put together an RFP?
Thank you for clarifying, that's what the intent was.
Okay, so, um, with that said, maybe this is fairly straightforward and simple, did you have a quick comment?
Yeah, yeah, just, um, questioning, as far as a bid, I would also like to have some kind of analysis, like, um, turn on investment, total cost of ownership, you know, sort of maintenance, all that stuff goes, because I think that stuff needs to go into our decision making.
Yeah, and you'll get that.
Okay, is that coming?
They put that, they put that out in the, in terms of actually showing maintenance and things like that that they would do. And I'll be quite frank with you, there's really no maintenance on it and I would expect that the town staff could maintain it with our capabilities and save ourselves a bunch of money each year. Um, you know, there's insurance involved, which we already would be covered, and there are a number of things. And I'll, I'll lay that out once we get the, uh, the proposals in, or I'll have staff lay it out once we get proposals in. And I, I can do a, uh, rate of return analysis, staff can do a rate of return analysis and, uh, see how it comes out.
Okay, and we, and we may be able to include that as part of the RFP question to say, make that part of the proposal, right?
Well, that's, that's why I raised-
Yeah, they typically do.
Okay.
That, um, I think if we did it though, uh, at least the one that I did see, I, I had a preliminary one done, just to make sure that we're in the right ballpark. Um, they included all the maintenance and that sort of stuff, which is good for the company to do. But I, I, I could get involved and maybe and just say, uh, break it out, rate of return with and without, uh, that. Rate of return is quite easy, you just do a present day analysis and you're done.
Okay. Okay, that's all, I just want to make sure I have the information when it comes.
I, I have a question, I'm just trying to figure out, I hear a lot of talking about a council doing something and staff doing something. It seems like to me it should be more staff doing this, and so that's my question is, why are we involved in, in this level? And why are you working number, you know, so I'm just trying to figure out, don't our budget folks and our town manager, can't he?
They're certainly welcome to do it, I'd be more than happy, I did it preliminarily because I wanted to look at the various, um, uh, approaches. And, and, uh, a lot of these go out for twenty-five years, but in reality, the systems are good for forty years. And as a matter of fact, these big, uh, solar farms are based on forty years because they, they're all solid state. It's like the solid state TV, they just basically don't break unless the bolt of lightning hits them like hit Doug Mackenzie's house. And so it, it's a, they've had them for a long time ago, that were built a long time ago, they lasted forty years. And the technology has gotten better and better and better.
I think to the Mayor Protem's point, um, I think we should rely on staff to do the heavy lifting for the analysis.
I'm more than happy to have them.
And if, and if we need to, yeah, if we need to, to say, hey, we'd like a little more detail, certainly the people submitting the proposal are going to be willing to do the heavy lifting because they're going to win, want to win a bid, so.
Well, we can just ask them for the, the different breakdowns, but, but, most of these guys, I think, have kind of a standard proposal system. You know, they punch in their numbers, so we would have to ask them to delete costs, certain costs, and that can be done.
Yeah, that's-
And I will, I will be glad, if you, if council doesn't mind, I'll be glad to work with staff on that part to make sure that the, the request for quote, quote goes out. Or I can sit back and watch, um, uh, which would be easier. But I, I just want to make sure that it comes in correctly so that we have all the right data.
Sure, sure. I'll, I'll let the town manager work on that, I think he'll work with staff to put together. But it, you know, if he has questions about the framework, I mean, he's certainly read this and heard what you've been asking. If there's some specifics that you would like to add, then maybe we can have that reviewed, you can work on that offline.
Yeah, I think if, if the council were to give me directions to have an RFP prepared and we'll worry, worry about how to get it done.
Thank you.
And who to consult with and, yeah.
All right, um, I, I sense generally an, an acceptance of that, would you like to go ahead and make a motion?
Yeah, I, I do want to say one thing, I did ask Drew, um, I'm sorry, Mr. Havens, um, how much time that would take the staff, because I didn't want them to spend twenty hours or more, and he said he thought it would be minimal, so that, I'm gonna make sure, yeah.
All right, so we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we've got a couple of seconds, so let me take the vote, if there's no discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, thank you, that, that motion passed unanimously. Um, Mr. Town Manager, if you have any questions about what the RFP might need to include, feel free to ask.
We'll do it.
Thank you very much.
And if we need to-
Uh, now we move to new business number three, uh, council member Denise Wilkie, and I'll let you introduce your topic.
Sure, I, I may do this out of order, um, I know there are people here that are waiting to do new business number four. Do you want them to go ahead and go, so, because this is more of a council thing, or do you, can we do that, or, so they don't have to wait?
No, I'm, I think it'd be okay.
Okay, okay, just want to give the people a chance to go home that are waiting around, okay. Um, so my, um, the topic I want to talk about is Apex Historical Society and trying to get them more recognition and more, um, awareness of their organization and trying to connect our old Apex with our new Apex and realize that people can come together and learn more about the history of Apex. And one of the ways that we talked about it as a historical society was doing something called Music on the Lawn. And that would be taking the lawn of the Tunstall House and having it, um, uh, Sunday afternoons, one Sunday afternoon, um, a month. And I have it up here between April and October, four to six o'clock in the afternoon, where you would have something like bluegrass music or folk music or country music, it's performed by local bands. And it would bring hopefully visitors to town as well as our citizens and give them a chance to again, um, have a, more of a feel of the community and understand that we do have a historic home sitting here on town property and I bring awareness to that. Um, we would also hope to raise funds to restore the Tunstall House. We, we know that every year the town is paying tax dollars to keep it just standing and we would like to actually see that, the Tunstall House becoming sustainable itself so that it can, we can use it for events or functions of some sort. Um, so the deal with this is that we would create awareness for the Tunstall House, raise funds for the Historical Society as well as the Tunstall House, um, promote cultural arts and also promote Apex downtown, because in doing this, where the, the location of the Tunstall House is very loc, very close to downtown, people could walk around down there as well on Sunday afternoons. Um, the, the donations would obviously be volunteer donations and the way that I had it written up is fifty percent would go to the Historical Society, thirty percent the Town of Apex, and twenty percent to the band. And the Historical Society felt like that was a fair deal because we're going to use the property as well as also using money toward the, to restore the town's property, which is the Tunstall House. So, do y'all have any questions?
You just said it was voluntary.
Voluntary, yeah.
Uh, what, what's the logistics, does that pass the hack kind of thing or?
I, I would hope, yeah, there'd be like a hat there somewhere and that, you know, you would say, somebody's going to stand up, somebody from the Historical Society, like Mr. Hastings or somebody would say, you know, this is what we're doing, we're trying to raise awareness for this and, um, so forth. And then hopefully people would, oh, oh, yeah, there's a historical house here, oh, there's a Historical Society, let's do something about this. So the first Sunday, it may only be ten dollars, but the town gets five, so, hey, it's five dollars.
How much do we spend annually to keep it, the house standing?
It, it varies, we, we invested about thirty thousand in that property last fiscal year, did some roof work and-
It's just past work, it's really not repairing it, it's just keeping it and-
So it doesn't get worse off?
Correct.
Keep the squirrels out.
Correct.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mhm.
So, I, I was talking to a Boy Scout before the meeting and we're saying if we could get people to, that even knew that the house was there, he said, oh, wow, our Boy Scout troop could go out there and do something with the gardens and plant flowers and so on and so forth to make it nice and place where we could actually have town events. So, I mean, we can put a tent out there and even in the winter with heaters and have people out there on the lawn doing things.
I think that'd be phenomenal, I like what, um, uh, I think downtown Kerry did something similar with an old house on their town property and turned it into a museum, um, I think that's, that'd be a great thing to do to kind of show some history of our, our town, I like it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other thoughts or questions for council members?
What's the, what's the total, I'm sorry, what's the total cost to get that thing in working order? Have we, is that?
The-
Don't ask, don't ask.
That's what, the, the latest-
Four hundred and-
Number was in the range of about three quarters of a million dollars, about seven hundred and fifty thousand to, because you, we can't, we can't renovate. We need to restore, because it's, it is, in our historic district, it is a kind of linchpin of our historic district. So, we can't just, you know, throw a coat of paint on it, call it good enough. You know, aluminum siding's got to come off, we need to put period siding back on, the roof needs to be changed back to period roofing. Windows need to be done, heating system, plumbing, and then, of course, the structure needs a little work in the basement too. So, it's a big, it's a big price tag, you'll see it, you saw it last year in your CIP, um, and you'll see it again in the, at your retreat, in the discussion of the CIP again. It's just a matter of having the CIP meet up with actual dollars, um, and, and the council prioritizing that for us, uh, where, you know, where you want that as far as capital investment.
And, and so what the hope is, uh, Mr. Moyer, is that this will bring awareness to that and then some big bucks, daddy warbucks in the crowd says, oh, let's write a check right now and fix this house.
It'll be me. I wish, what if I could, but, uh, I can't.
I see, I see-
Looking around the crowd.
People start, yeah.
Nobody's making eye contact.
So, you know, and, and it's, you know, somehow along the lines, some even little kids get together and say, hey, let's raise our pennies or whatever. So, something happens that we make a, make something happen with that instead of it sitting there.
Any further thoughts?
Could even have a community vegetable garden now that they like they used to have.
There you go, exactly.
Sure. And solar panels.
Huh?
Can't put solar panels on a historic house.
For shade.
Oh, oh, absolutely. Matter of fact, I, I, I'll bring that up next meeting.
Yeah, can't do that.
Well, it's one way to repair the roof.
I, I think Mr. Hastings would probably fall out in the ground, but.
I think Mr. Clark would fall out.
Did, were you saying yes? Oh, yeah, we're just trying to figure that out, a half a yes. Does anybody have any other comments or we can accept a motion, I think if you're ready to make one?
I'll make a motion to approve.
So this would be, just to clarify, this would be to approve the use of the campus and the Tunstall House grounds for music events aimed at raising awareness and potentially raising funds for restoration of the building and the grounds in general. Okay, any further discussion on that motion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that motion passes, that takes care of new business number three. I want to thank the council members for being proactive and bringing items for discussion. Uh, now we move to new business number four, uh, new business number four was consent number six. Consent six. Consent six, yes, which was the event, right? All right, so, um, let's just, before we get into the discussion, and I'll give you the floor in just a moment, Councilman Moyer, um, just to remind ourselves, this was a motion to approve seventeen requested special events for this calendar year and approve the town acting as a cosponsor for these events, um.
Mr. Mayor, uh-
Uh, yes.
Uh, David Woods is here from the Halle Culture Arts Center and he's the coordinator of all the special events-
All right.
-applications, and he, he can make a brief presentation if, if that's acceptable to the council to start the discussion?
Um, uh, ye-
Or do you want to hear from?
Yes, mm, yes, comma, um, but I would like, I would like, I would actually like to hear a very brief question from the council member who pulled it from consent, not a long dissertation, but just what question are you looking to get clarification on? Maybe we can be concise.
How many words do I have?
Um, do you have?
Three minutes, three minutes.
I have three minutes.
Put them on the light.
Put them on the lights.
Do you have one event or five that you want to talk about?
I have just a general, um, issue that I want us to look at and discuss. I see seventeen events for a total of a hundred plus thousand dollars. Um, I see events that cost us roughly ninety-seven dollars to eighteen thousand dollars. Uh, I think the most expensive one was the Peak Fest, um.
So without picking one particular one, you have an overarching sort of-
An overarching, next year, what if we have thirty-four events for two hundred thousand dollars? What is our policy if, to kind of mitigate some of these expenses that we have going on with all these different events?
Okay, I want to, that was a good summary, and I want to put a pin in that, and I want to hear from Mr. Wood, and then we'll come back to that, because I think this presentation that you have would probably help us get to that.
Mayor, members of council, thank you, uh, basically I'm here to answer questions and we have members of staff that reviewed these seventeen applications for various departments. We also have the event coordinators, most of them here too, to get into the detail kind of questions. But basically, this process was started, um, last year, we, we approved this, uh, special event policy and guidelines in June, you guys did, because exactly that, because, you know, when I first started eighteen years ago, we had, you know, we had a Peak Fest, you know, it was called Peak Week, and then we had a Fourth of July and maybe a Christmas parade. Over the years, those events have grown and there's a lot of demand in, in staff and resources and time putting on all these events. And these were all, events were coming to you, I think, in ones and twos for approval and so, or to kind of, uh, string line- And these were all events were coming to you, I think, in ones and twos for approval, and so, in order to kind of streamline that process to look at these costs and impacts on staff time and, you know, town resources, we put this, um, policy in place. So, this is the first batch of cosponsored applications, so the- what's happened is we've gone through this review process, we did this with a January fifteen deadline, so we can tie it into the budget, because all these, approval of these events would have budget implications obviously for the various departments. So, all seventeen of these events actually have had, I think they've happened in the past, at least once and some multiple times. So, but that is a great question, what happens if we get thirty or forty more? So, that's- that's what the staff does first, we- first we get the applications in, then we look at them and we talk, what is the commitments to put on this event, how much man hours, what kind of equipment? And so that we can plan and make sure that we understand the event thoroughly and be able to present it to you, we're- we're not saying yes or no to any of these, we're just putting it to you guys as a gr- as a group of events to- to you, for you to decide, um, based on some input, you know, what we can accomplish, what we feel we can do, um, you know, to approve that or not. And a lot of these events come down, you know, to street closure, so a- a lot of impacts become on the police department, um, EMS is involved, um, fire, um, parks and recreation, we have the electric, we have street cleaning, so there's- all these events touch the whole town, department, staff wise, and some are much larger in scope than others, like the Pig Fest and the Peak Fest, um, and then some are just, you know, hanging a banner, the Historical Society just wants to hang a banner, but that takes a utility crew and some time there, so there's various degrees. And I guess some of the things that we kind of talked about as staff going through this process, um, that, you know, maybe we need some clarification in the future on, is some of the five Ks, you know, that we could, there could be a five K request every weekend in Apex, I'm sure there's enough groups that want to do that. So, where do you draw the line on that? The application process is just apply for that, that's where you decide. But then, um, which five K, you know, has to pay for off-duty police officers, which five K could have that for free? Um, and how, you know, so that's- that's not necessarily in those guidelines per se, we don't have that. So, that's again another, those are some issues for you guys to look at and give us guidance, how you want to go forth on that. But, um, and you'll see a mix of those, some of- some of these events are paying for off-duty police officers, some, I think, the, uh, three of the, we have five five Ks in here, and three of those are paying for off-duty police officers, two have requested not. Um, some of the events, like the, uh, music festival and the Pig Fest, actually pay for off-duty police officers, I believe, for closing the streets down, and that's for, they're, that's a big chunk of change, and they still cost the town a lot, of, you know, additional resources through public works, um, and other departments, et cetera. So, these are the requests, I don't know if I answered your question at all, but, um, that is a, you know, definitely something to look to, and these events have happened in the past, but that doesn't mean that we won't have thirty more new applications next year to consider, and we'll have to make some of those decisions and choices.
So, thank you very much, before- before I come back to you, I- I heard a very important part of that, first of all, that this is the first time that we've really done a consolidation of these, and I think that's very commendable. Um, in the past, when they've come in one at a time, it's been very hard for the council to keep track of, for Parks and Rec and police to keep track of, and frankly, it's easy to kind of run away and not realize what's- what actually is on a calendar, what's coming. So, this was an effort, I know the town manager had a lot to do with making sure we put together a consolidated request process, and you do it once for the calendar year, people should be able to know, and maybe if they miss the first year, this is a good indicator that where we're going with this, plan ahead, get on the calendar, we can consider it. The other thing that I think is very important out of this is, the council has the- the, um, benefit of doing right by the citizens and being frugal in the right way, but also supporting things when they should by considering the whole at one time, rather than taking the pieces which might lead to an unfair, and I don't want to use the word adjudication, but an unfair decision making inadvertently by what may have transpired the week before or a month before that may color you on a- color your mindset on any- any particular day. But if you have everything out in front of you at one time, I think this is a- a very fair way to approach this type of thing. So, kudos to- to pulling together one consolidated one. To your point, Councilman Moyer, um, I think what I heard was, um, from David Wood here that he would like some guidance and input on general policies, like are there characteristics of, let's take five K races, where due to the nature of this five K race, this is one we think should be supported, but due to the nature of that one, we think it should not. If you make that decision a little more in a vacuum with general statements, they're more likely to be considered fair, uh, whereas if we were to pick and choose, it would look like there's some unfairness or some bias, uh, going on. So, I think the right thing to do, and my suggestion, would be for the Parks, Recreation and Cultural Resources Committee, um, to perhaps take a look at some of the questions that they may have at the high level, what kind of policies might we want to set? Um, and then, based on that feedback, they then could probably take something to the advisory committee or the commission, to use the correct term, um, for further approvals. Does that sound reasonable, or does anybody have any further thoughts?
Well, I agree with what you're saying, I do have some, a couple of extra questions though.
Okay, does anybody have any thoughts on what, because I know we're in on a little monologue there.
I just want to concur that I do think we need to treat everybody fairly and by the same standards, uh, as criteria as far as deciding what goes, what doesn't.
Okay.
That's all.
All right.
Well, I'm looking at your estimated personnel costs, but some of those, I think you just said are- are offset, they pay for that.
That's my question.
The costs that you see in your report here are actual costs the town would incur.
Net cost.
Not the off-duty officers, so for, where, you're, those personnel breakdown hours, and I have them broken down by departments too and what that represents, but those are actual costs. Now, that, those costs are using an average position salary, so if it's a police officer, it's- it's using an average pay for that particular police officer based on time and half and-
Eleanor can explain that.
But that's, you know, that's where that- that flat fee, and then it's, then they just estimate man hours that would then would take, each department, and we use those rate charts to come up with those- those- those dollars to put next to, basically. So, it's just really, those dollars are representing personnel costs, and a few of those have some hally- hally rental costs that were basically given to the event, if it's a cosponsored event. Now, these are all cosponsored, meaning they are asking the town for some sort of financial, staff time, some sort of, you know, in-kind gift to that event. There are other events that will still come in throughout the year, um, but they- and they will not be asking the town for any resources, they'll just be using a town street or something like that, so they might need to be closed and still have to go through the special event application process, but it will not be asking for cosponsorship, and so they will incur the total cost for the- that event. That makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, so I think the two things in front of us, one is we've got this particular item that was on the consent agenda that we've now pulled off, so we have one, our order of business to either approve, modify and approve or completely reject if we cho- so choose, um, that item. The second thing is, your, to your point, I think is a little more forward thinking, I think with this being version one point O of our process, um, certainly there's gonna be room for improvement by definition, not selling short anything that's happened, but that's just how things work. Um, I think we are, we, I think we all understand, Parks Rec, the town manager, um, that this process will get a little cleaner and a little better, will get better participation from people, and once we have a predictable process and it's published out there, people will be able to follow it quite easily, I hope. Um, so I think we can make progress on that front. Um, if that's not really a concern, if- if we're, you're okay with that, I would like to go back to the first item, which is to take care of this line item of business, is that all right?
Uh, I don't know if I am, you want us to take it to committee and discuss it and make modifications?
Um, I would like, no, I would, well, this particular item, I'd like for us to discuss right here, right now, to either decide, do we like it as it's presented, or the- is there a minor adjustment that we think we need to make? Hopefully not a major overhaul, and let's vote on this particular one tonight, and then we can deal with how do we make it better as a separate conversation. So, is there, I, maybe I should ask the question, is there something on this proposal that concerns you very specifically, or that you think we need to discuss?
On this proposal, no, I want to work on going forward on session two point O.
All right. Okay, great, great, um, does any-
I agree with that.
Okay, does- does anybody, does anybody want to talk about this one or make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve, uh, this item which was consent number six as submitted, any further discussion?
I- I need to put it on the Parks and Rec committee agenda to discuss.
Um, I think if-
Is that where version two point O is to start?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
With no further discussion, I'll call the vote, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right, so that one passes, thank you very much, so now you know what to do with it. Go have some events this year. Um, I plan to attend as many as I can. Uh, with- with that said, thank y'all for sticking around, um, and, um, I'll gi- I'll give a- a few seconds for everybody to kind of head out the door, thanks for coming out. And yes, um, I think if you work with, um, scheduling the committee and just put generally a statement on there, um, I think between John and David, they'll- they'll know. And I assume Drew would perhaps have, because he has some thoughts on it right now. All right, um, trying not to lose too much control, that takes care of all of our pub- o- open session items. Um, here we have, uh, time for closed session, and I do have a closed session for consulting with the town attorney on handling the matter of City of Fayetteville and Public Works Commission, and, uh, also to consult with the town attorney related to the handling of the matter of Town of Apex v. Rubin and a property acquisition, uh, negotiating position. So, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session for those items.
Second.
Motion in a second, do we have any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. All right, we're going into closed session, and I see no further business after that, we will come back to adjourn.